We've got enough folks here, so let's begin. It's the Tuesday, June 18th, 2024. This is the West Newbury Planning Board, and we'll get our meeting underway at 7:01 PM. And the first item on the agenda is a continued public hearing, 125 River Road Eagleness subdivision. So I move to open the hearing.
Second?
All those in favor?
Right guy.
Four zero, yes, there we are. Good, very good, thank you. And I see we have Dennis Greci with us. That's terrific. We also have David Kelly from Meridian, our engineer for the town oversight on this project. So the objective tonight, just to do final reviews and whatnot, but you know, pending any undue concerns, well, pending any concerns from board members, it would be my objective that we vote on this project tonight. And Dennis, just so you're aware, we are short a member. But as you know, this is a simple majority vote. And I think you'll get a flavor of if there's any significant objections as we discuss this.
Okay, thank you.
Did you want to just bring us up to date? I know there had been some recent documents that went back and forth with you and Meridian. Maybe just give us a recap on where that's at.
Sure, so we had, and if the board would like, I can share my screen. I don't want to. All right, so we had comments we received from Meridian back probably four weeks ago. More recently, about four or five days ago, we received, that was last Tuesday, received that comment from the Conservation Commission's peer reviewer, who obviously wouldn't. So our goal was always to try to get all these last comments addressed in one final revised set. So that's what we did. So each of that revised set, that towards the end of last week. And then David had a couple additional comments which we've addressed. So that's why this plan was revised on June 12th to June 17th. As far as conservation goes, we did have a hearing last night and they closed and they voted to approve the project. And we're hoping to get the order of conditions this week potentially. I just was trading emails with the Conservation Chair. But the plan itself has not changed significantly from what the board has previously seen. We have had some refinements and some minor changes, but nothing significant since that last set that we issued back in May.
Okay, no, I agree. And congratulations, I'm glad that the CONCOM has closed. I'm sure you are too.
Yes.
Yes, delighted, great. We have David Kelly with us. And you know, I think we've all have probably read through his comments, but perhaps we can have a summary from David on his most recent letter and whatnot.
Sure, hi, David Kelly, Meridian. I'd received plans from Dennis on Friday, I believe, and they were in response to my letter dated May 1st-ish, I think it was. And that was that color-coded letter that I had provided to the board. And basically, what he submitted to me on Friday, I was, he had addressed every item. There were two very small issues that he fixed on Monday and gave back to us. But other than that, everything has been addressed in its incompleteness with all the comments that have been issued.
Yeah, that was my take after reading through everything. And again, it was a very, it was a very good summary that you put together for us. Thank you for that.
Appreciate the color coding.
Very helpful.
Very, very helpful, yes.
It's setting precedent in my office, I'll tell you that much.
Well, it's probably a bit of a pain for you, but you know, where there were a number of comments and whatnot, and over the length of time this has taken, yeah, I find it very, very useful. So something we'd probably be looking for in the future.
Dennis did a great job. I mean, there's only a couple of peer reviews and he addressed everything.
Yeah, excellent.
Thank you, Dennis.
Do board members have any comment or that they want to talk about, whether it's on any matter of the plans or on the waivers as presented?
Well, are we going to go through the waivers even quickly rather than vote on them globally? I don't know what your preference is.
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate.
I do have one question, just out of curiosity. Have you worked with the Shea walls before, Dennis?
We have, yep. We've, we expect those on a number of projects we've worked on. And I know the contract, the site contractor that the applicant has chose to work with has also said that he has experience with them as well.
Yeah, I was, you know, I'm remiss because I didn't notice it before, but ending up with a nearly 6% slope there for a section, that's surprising. Yeah, I mean, it's not extraordinary or anything awful. I'm not making an issue of it. I'm just, you know, I see this whole wetland area and for there to be like 20 feet of difference in such a short bit of driveway is surprising to me. That's all, that's all I have.
Okay, no, no, appreciate it.
Why is that funny, David?
The profiles always make it look so much steeper. I mean, 5% is the cross slope of a standard parking lot. It's nothing.
Oh, no, 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 I ride my bike all the time. You get it 5% to 6%. You're in an easy gear and you're breathing hard. Don't give me this, Dave. I know my percentages.
Well, perhaps Mr. Fusco is looking forward to this, up and down on his place.
If, I tell you what, the kids will have fun with it, whatever kids are moving in there.
I did notice something that I hadn't noticed before, and it's probably also been there all along, which is a cistern to be created. Is that wire protection or what's the deal there?
The fire cistern is, it's a requirement in the subdivision rules regulations.
Yeah, okay, I just hadn't noticed where it was before, I guess, so.
So in lieu of a fire hydrant, there's no water, so we're bringing the cistern.
Okay.
I just had a question about what the back and forth was recently on the CONCOM regarding the plans. Was it the delineation of the wetland? Is that the update?
The delineation did take, you know, longer than we had hoped and it wasn't through anyone's fault on the commission or the peer reviewer, it just took a long time to coordinate everybody. So we did have some changes to the boundary. And then that kind of created a ripple effect of changing to the wetland impacts, wetland replications. And then most recently, we just were waiting for the peer viewer to issue their final response letter.
Okay, so I guess, just a question, Dennis, how different is it from what's depicted here?
So this is, this is the most recent wetland boundary. And it's not significant. I don't know if I, I'm trying to see where we have. So you can see these older flags here. So this boundary used to come up like this, go 24, 23, 22, 21.
No, okay.
So we've, you know, through meeting with the peer viewer at the site, we, the wetland biologist for the applicant and the wetland biologist for the conservation kind of came into agreement to essentially eliminate these flags, add this new flag, connect here. You can see same thing here, they bumped out 6C. They bumped out 8C. So it got bigger in several locations, but it wasn't, it's essentially the same, the same project. The wetland crossing didn't really change considerably.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Well, you really had to sharpen your pencil there to get your 100-foot offset from the wells to the septic.
We did, yeah. And we had, we did conduct test pits. I think that was something that the planning board was looking for.
Yes.
You've got those on sheet eight, yeah.
Yeah, but we had, you know, we have shifted the, you know, we didn't get great, I don't think this parked actually, so we had to shift the system over here. So this will require pretreatment because it's within 100 feet of a wetland. I mean, yeah, we do have those 100-foot well buffers just outside the systems.
Well, where there's a shoe horn.
Yep.
Yeah, no, no, it'll work, it'll work.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I think what we should do is, Anne's suggestion, just run through the waivers. And I'm not sure if Sue has that easily, or David or Dennis.
I think you can, if you, you can just go to page, the cover page, and they're all listed on the cover page of the plan.
Yeah, it's easy enough to find them in the letter too, with that great color coding.
Or in the letter, right.
Okay.
It's also in your COV.
Yes, in the draft.
Yeah, so yeah, I will have difficulty reading through all of these. Is there someone that has a hard copy, either Dennis or David, that could just run through and just make sure that? Anne, were you looking for a vote on each one or just?
No, I just want to kind of touch base on each one. It seems to be a little bit sloppy even after all this time to just vote them all.
Yep, no.
I can, I can share the screen with the draft document.
Would you like me to stop share?
If, oh, no, he's got it there, you got it. No, that's good, that's fine.
So Brian, that's hard for you to see, can we make it?
Would have to be a little, little larger for me to.
We can start.
Actually, why don't I?
Yep, I got that, yep, that's good.
The proposed, the proposed waivers and the certificate of vote, Brian, they've got some reasoning included with them. So should I, want me to share that?
Actually, that'd probably be a better.
The reasoning's actually kind of helpful.
Yes.
For being very detailed.
All right, let me see if I remember how to share my stuff.
I can do it if you need.
There it is.
Did that pop up?
It did.
Is that hard enough for you to read?
That's perfect, Ray, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so the first, first one is waiver to allow for elevations. I won't read the specific quotations.
That's fine, that's a detail.
Flood elevation detail.
Yep.
The second is a waiver from requirement to locate all trees over 10 inches in diameter within the right of way. Let's see, they've been located via an instrument survey shown on the plans, whatnot. They've reduced the pave travel to 15 feet at the wetlands crossing from 18 to reduce impacts and limit the clearing. Everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Number three is a waiver for requirements to show a major existing features of the land, including waterways, wetlands, and within 100 feet of the subdivision. Let's see, they are in fact shown on the plans. Additional location would not benefit the project or the review of the project.
That's because that, the original lot's just so large.
It is indeed, yes.
Yes.
Okay, so that's.
That counts, that makes sense, it's.
Yep, number four, not to require average daily traffic counts. Really not, as it says, not adding really any use to the road. Makes sense. Number five, waiver from requirement for street trees. They're preserving, as it says, large wooded areas and we don't need more street trees along River Road, I think in our general opinion. Everyone okay with that or?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Number six, require, waiver to require location size and type of sidewalk, trails, lighting, and curbing. Doesn't make sense frankly, as it states, for the two buildable lots.
Yeah, and we do that all the time.
Yes, we do. Number seven, waiver from the requirement for drainage cocks. It's not subject, as noted for the stormwater standards, as it's a subdivision with four or fewer lots. The recharge system's been incorporated and it is designed to mitigate stormwater runoff. We'll hope that we don't get too many 500-year storms, for sure. Number eight, excuse me, waiver from the proposed street trees, including size and type.
Similar to the other one.
Similar, yes. Number nine, waiver from requirement for the 250-foot site distance. It's, that, we do see that west, but not to the right. And I think we all felt the trimming of a bush there provides a reasonable line of sight, although people exiting will need to be cautious.
Yeah, I mean, if it, if it were a different road, the amount of traffic on River Road is at least now reasonable.
Can I just, is this the, from the decision that we're looking at right now?
Yes.
Can I just make a slight editorial comment? That you look to the left, that's the west. Can we say instead of to the right, can we say to the east? Because I think that's clearer.
I think that would be much better. Site distance to the east of.
Other private drive or proposed.
Yeah, I think with the, you know, the speeds and whatnot on that road.
Yeah, no, I don't have a problem with that. I'm just talking about the language, I'm trying to make it.
Yep.
This is the one that I was, you know, a little hung up on before just as a waiver, because you know, it is a tight turn. And so is it worthwhile noting the distances that Sue reminded me that are on the plan? So there is an actual measurement on the plan going in the east direction and the west direction. And I think it's 185 feet coming from the west and I think it's 115 feet shown on the plan coming from the east.
If that's true.
Here it's saying that it's 250 from the west, so that's not correct. So I take your point, Tim, but we could just put in the actual dimensions and the waiver request could be to waive it to those.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yep.
Do you remember what, what sheet that was on?
Yes, it's sheet nine. And it's right at the, right at the road. There's a line that shows it in each direction.
I mean, I don't want to be putting the planning board in a, shall we say, a tight spot if, you know, if something does happen there and we wave.
We should, we should make this match. So it's 185 feet to the west.
To the west, yeah.
115 feet to the east. And this language should be corrected to.
Yeah, either that or, or change the language to wave to the distances as shown on the drawing.
That's fine too.
But either way, maybe a number's better.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I put the number in, I think it'd be fine.
Put the number in, right, okay.
Yeah, again, I think given the traffic on the road and given that it's two houses, all these.
Right, yeah, no, but it does show that we looked at it seriously, you know, because it is a bit tight, yeah.
By the way, is there, is there a way that people buying the, these lots and building, is there a way that they get this number?
Well, the plans and the, and the document, the decision will be recorded.
Right, but I don't know how savvy most people are about having their, their attorney review the.
Yeah, I just, I just like the people buying the lot to get a heads up on this one. But I don't know if there's any practical way of doing that.
I guess I have a question for the engineers too. Is the 250, that seems like kind of a blanket number. It's one thing if I'm pulling up, you know, onto Route 128, but what's that, what's the 250 based on? Is it a traffic speed or?
Yeah, my guess is it's the, it's the speed of a typical roadway in the town or, you know, based on the, the speed of a, I would expect the speed of a car traveling towards an intersection. And just, you know, just as a point of, for the future potential homeowners, so that the two potential homeowners are the two applicants or the applicant for the property and the other neighbor at 171 River Road. And I think that, just kind of based on the discussion around the site distance, I don't know if a future homeowner would fully be able to understand what 185-foot site distance is versus a 250. I think that just going, you know, if they're going to sell a house in 30 years, they're going to see that driveway or see that roadway and just kind of see it firsthand. I don't think the, the distance itself's going to cause a potential homeowner to, to view this form property one way or another. And that's be my opinion, I.
I think that, I think that's a fair point.
I think it is, we've all lived on busy roads at one time or another in our lives.
I'd also point out that this, it's a happy coincidence that the site distance is greater to the left, if you will, because oncoming traffic will be in the right lane there. There'll be less chancy. So it actually works out nicely.
True.
Yep.
We okay with that?
Yep, yep.
Okay. Number 10, waiver from requirement that the frontage of the existing street of the parcel shall be at least the frontage required in the zoning district. And as we go on to explain how that frontage in fact is determined. So, any, you're okay with that?
Yeah, we, we discussed this a lot along the way.
Yeah. Number 11, a waiver is required to allow for the right of way to be less than one-half the frontage required for the zoning district away from the abutting lot. And we noted the, let's see, the center line is 82 feet, travel way 91 feet, location, et cetera. Ample buffering of the lot is provided by the wooded areas that's to remain. I don't have any problem with that.
Yeah.
Number 12, waiver to not require curbing for this proposed subdivision. We know it's a private way, minor local access road. They're unnecessary due, as noted, small nature of the project.
I'd like to require that we do, we have granite curbs put in at the builder's personal expense.
There you go, I'm sure he'll be happy with that.
Some brick walkways.
Yeah, yeah. Actually, my, my brother was visiting from Oregon and we went by construction, so he couldn't believe all the granite curb laid out for a project to be passing.
We like our granite here. Number 13, now waiver to allow for the travel way width to be 18 feet now or down to 15 feet at the wetland crossing. And if we've all determined that absolutely makes sense, it was certainly necessary for the CONCOM and whatnot approval here. Further impact, less than any impacts as much as possible.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And we're okay with the fire department access and whatnot, so.
Yeah, they, they have reviewed the plans, yep.
Yep.
14, waiver to allow for dead-end driveway, not require a cul-de-sac with a handmade turnaround. We don't know provides access for turnaround of the vehicles. And again, they have reviewed it and had no adverse comments. 15, waiver to not require landscape island incentive cul-de-sac as the cul-de-sac is now proposed, so we don't need that. 16, waiver to not require sidewalks, pedestrian, and bicycle trails.
Yeah.
Whoop, wait a minute, it's, it's a local road, private way, don't need that. 17, waiver to not require footpath and trails within the subdivision. It's really not applicable for this, for these two houses. 18, waiver not require bicycle path or recreation path, same rationale. Where are we? 19, waiver from requirements for stormwater management requirements and calculations. They do show roof recharge chambers and driveway runoff fresh stone trenches.
Yeah.
And number 20, waiver from requirements to provide water mains, they will be supplied by private values.
Okay. Yeah.
Yep, yep.
We all good with that?
Yes, thank you.
No, no, that was, Anne, a good, good point. That was helpful to make a couple of tweaks there. And you're right, who knows will ever come back and read those, but.
We'll feel better.
We will sleep better. Before I move to close the public hearing, do the board members have any additional comments? Or anyone who might be listening wish to make a comment? Okay, hearing none. I move to close the public hearing for 125 River Road Eagleness subdivision.
Second?
Thank you. All those in favor of closing the hearing? Brian Murphy, Ray, Anne, and Tim. Four zero to close the hearing. Sue, I think you did a good job on the draft and refresh my memory. Been a while since we had one of the subdivisions come through. What's the timing on this? And there's going to be a few tweaks in there because Deb isn't here and you've got to adjust the summary of the vote and whatnot.
Yes.
What is the, the timing requirements that are available to us here?
So, my understanding is that it doesn't say, like a special permit, that you have 20 days to provide the decision to the clerk. And if someone knows differently, I'm happy to hear it. But I think you, it kind of assumes that you'll forthright do it. So in this case, I think that we might need a little time to finalize the conditions. There's a little bit of work left and I think that's, that's okay. But I would, I do think we, if you're not, if you want, if the board wants to see the final version and they don't, we don't get to that tonight, if there's still a little bit of work that needs to be done, I would suggest that you ask for a little more time to get that decision to the clerk, because I believe we end on June 30th. And I think you can, can make a vote, but I think in terms of getting the decision to the clerk, you want to be able to do that within the time as well. So I would recommend asking for a bit more time to get that done. We have to wait 20 days from the date that you provide the decision to the clerk to endorse it and then record it, because you have to have the appeals period there. So there's three things, there's the vote, there's getting the decision ready in its final form. And then there's the 20-day period between when the decision is given to the clerk and when you can actually endorse the subdivision.
So, yeah, what I'm thinking of, because it's later in our, it's coming up on our agenda, we're going to discuss our July meeting schedule. And I think I would like to, and I think probably the board would like to see the final draft document. We typically would, would do that. And we will probably be, I don't want to change our focus here and talk about our meeting schedule, but we're either going to meet on the 9th or the 16th of July. And if it's the 9th, I guess I would ask the applicants, Dennis, do you, do you folks have any issues? If, we, the intent will be to vote here tonight, but this is merely to provide the board an opportunity to review the final document and then file it with the clerk post haste.
I don't see an issue with that. I know the applicant is also on the call this evening. I don't think he has any, any contractors lined up, so I just would just make sure that Michael is okay with that as well.
I understand, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So yeah, if, if we do meet on the 9th, then I'm sure it'll be filed that week with, with the clerk. And we will advise you what we come to our conclusion on our July meeting. We were scheduled for July 2nd, but we, we always push that off. Um, in July.
So Brian, I would. Just sorry, I would just say we recommend that you vote um and agree um on a. On a on a date that it can be extended to, that's the decision. Getting the decision and can be extended to. The date.
I I'm I'm not clear what what.
So the the date, I'm guessing, my assumption is that the date for action includes getting it to the clerk's office. Right now, our date for action is the end of June. So I would recommend that it be maybe the end of July or somewhere past the date that you're gonna hear so that you have time to. To get that decision into the clerk within that time period.
Okay, but realistically, it'll be filed before that date anyway.
Yes, right, right after you could be the ninth or the sixteenth, whichever day you.
Correct. So you're saying we need to vote on that as well?
The clerk's office needs a documentation, so I would. Put a certificate of vote in or just a a vote in that says that it has been. Um, extended to this date so that we don't run afoul of the timing loss.
And that's regardless of our decision to vote on the project itself.
Yes. It's my assumption that a decision isn't a decision until you get the, you give it to the clerk, so. I would think that we need to cover ourselves for that date.
Okay.
Do you agree, Ann?
Well, in any case, we're not gonna be finished by June thirtieth, so I think this is just another in the series of extensions that would be bad.
Yes, yes.
So we make a safe amount and then we're safe.
Yes.
All right, so let's let's. Let's deal with that detail first, um, in which case I move that the. Deadline for the. Project decision documents to be filed with the town clerk. Be moved to July thirty-first.
Be extended.
Isn't this in the name of of the applicant requir-
Um, subdivision rules to say an agreement between the parties.
Okay.
Yeah, but I will ask for.
Have we voted on extensions before? I never remember doing that.
Yes.
Oh, okay. All right. I'm sorry. My apologies.
That's all right.
Motion.
So I'll I'll second your motion, Mr. Murphy.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ray. Um, all those in favor of the extension to July thirty-first? Four zero, all right. So again, Dennis, that's that's a a function. It will be our intent to have it filed before then.
Understood. Thank you.
Uh, so, uh, board members. I guess I I'm I'm. Doing a little informal poll. Do you have any reason to. Express your concern as to why we should not be voting on this project tonight?
No, my questions have been answered.
Okay. All right. I I move to approve the subdivision application. For one twenty-five River Road, known as Eagleness subdivision, that is before the board uh tonight. To include the the documentation. Provided in the. What's the, I I need the latest June dates of the drawings.
June seventeenth.
June seventeenth, thank you, provided in the June seventeenth. Drawings package submitted by the applicant and engineer.
Second.
Okay, um, all those in favor of approval.
Brian, just if I could, uh, just just discussion on this, um, do we need to say something about, you know, subject to the, you know, the compilation of the final, you know. Decision documents, something like that? Or no?
I think the approval of the project's kind of a separate thing from the decision in a way, isn't it?
It's what's a conditional. Approval.
I, yeah, I'll accept that as a as a friendly amendment.
Also, the the date on the drawings is actually June twelfth.
If they were updated, um, some of the plans were updated um on the seventeenth.
Yep. Probably after the CONCOM meeting.
Okay, so, okay.
Before the CONCOM meeting.
It's not the same on all the sheets then.
Correct, the subdivision plans proper, the ones that the that get recorded at the registry were not updated, the other sheets were.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Sorry, Brian. Yeah, so it's something like subject to the, you know, the conditions to be reflected in the final, what do we call it, decision?
In the final.
Certificate of vote.
Yeah, okay.
So, um, Sue, a friendly member to that, um, comma, subject to the conditions of the as in. As incorporated in the final certificate of vote. Okay, we we good with that? We're ready to vote?
Yes.
I'm ready to vote. Um, yeah, I, yes, Brian Murphy.
Ray, okay.
I do, I.
Kim Cronin, I.
Good. The the vote is four zero in approval of the subdivision project. Well. Congratulations, Dennis and Michael.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, so we will advise you of our, um, you you would would not need to attend, but just of our July meeting schedule and. It will be our intent to have this on the the final draft of the certificate. Available uh by that next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Very good. Thank you. Good luck.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So Brian, just um, some. Administrative stuff. Um, we also need to prepare the stormwater permit. Um, which that is granted by the Board of Health. We also need to decide on the the the. Dennis will be or the applicant will be providing um an easement, the the maintenance covenant for the road. Um, he's knows that he's going to be doing that. Um, and then the board also needs to decide with the applicant. Um, what they will have for um. Um, a performance bond guarantee for that amount of roadway. I assume it doesn't matter whether it's private or public, but there's still that requirement. Is that true?
Yeah, yeah, we we don't want, you know, them to not build what has been designed.
Right, right. Needs to be inspected by David and all that.
So do we need to, um, what do we, what what do we need to draft for the Board of Health's?
Um, it's a pretty, I included the sample um in the. In the packet. And it's pretty straightforward, and I think, and I included the um standard conditions that he have, and I would ask the board if there are any other. Conditions that you would recommend, and if the board wants to defer. And ask David if he wants to look at it to see if he would make any other recommend. Run recommended um conditions, I think that would be appropriate as well.
So I'm confused. I'm missing something here. I thought they weren't subject to this new. Regulatory regime because they're.
As a subdivision, they are not, but as, but all.
Amount of disturbance, okay.
Yes.
The one eighth, I think, got it, okay.
Yes. Yeah, so we're kind of a pass through because we have the eyes of David Kelly, where um who. Did the review of the stormwater um project narrative at the be, at the beginning, um, found it to be appropriate. I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I think that's was the the sum of it. Um, now we just need to. Incorporate that information into the permit. And pass it on to the board for their blessing as they're the authority now.
Okay, you want to pull up that document?
Um, sure.
Are you talking about what's the standard conditions for stormwater management permits?
Yes.
You're good with that?
That's right in the, it's.
Yeah, it's in the packet.
Yep. Race faster than I am. I love that.
Now, this is calling for surety. Is that gonna be rolled into other surety that this, you know, is it one big account that we? Overseal whether.
I would say the stormwater one would be separate, if there is one.
Uh, calls for it and for being there.
Can you go up just a little? See at the beginning. Oh, that, right, that's right. So this is basically an escrow to make sure that um there's. Um, construction oversight.
Right, so is it the Board of Health who's gonna be managing that oversight?
Yes.
But the money's still gonna flow through accounts held in the planning.
I think I think it could, I think that it would go to the. The stormwater authority. I think that's where they're handling it. I think we're only reviewing it because we have the extra set of eyes when we're reviewing a project that doesn't require.
Yeah, I I I think on other projects, they determine if they have. They do a surety on any individual homes or whatever.
Oh, okay, so they should be doing that, not.
I, that's my understanding, but.
Okay, all right. Well, that's great. Yeah.
Could be corrected.
Yeah, no, I think it's theirs to do.
Oh, good. Okay, then we don't need to worry about this.
Um, and this is pretty standard. I don't, I'm not sure we need to. Try to tweak this document that has been in existence just for two years.
Has it been used? How many projects has been used on? Do we know? In town?
Um, I believe that's. I think that's only two.
Okay.
Since these regulations have been finished.
I was just curious as to whether additional conditions had been imposed in any of the previous.
I believe he did have um um special conditions on others. But I don't, I don't know, David, do you feel like there are any other special conditions needed? For this particular project? That aren't captured in the the standard.
I went through it real briefly today, again, just to refresh myself with it and. I mean, without getting like super like over conservative, I can't think of anything now. I mean, the operation maintenance plan is recorded. It's registry and it's mentioned in here several times and that they need to. Uh, perform the maintenance and report it to the to the stormwater authorities, so I think. That's pretty much about all all that can be done.
It doesn't. Yeah, it doesn't look radical. Looks like, I mean. I'm no expert, but it looks like it covers all the bases.
Yeah, if this were, you know, a much larger project with seven detention basins, two wetland crossings, then we might have a some more speci-, you know, more specificity in here.
Oh, we do have two wetlands crossings.
But given that's that's all been reviewed by both David and the Conservation Commission, I feel like. It's probably gotten more oversight than it would have gotten if it just here directly.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, um, Sue, are you, we're looking for a motion to, uh, on on this?
Um, you don't, you're just gonna prepare it, um, and it will go to the stormwater authority. They will actually grant the permit.
Okay, that's fine.
But I, because we have David and we're, you know, we did the review, the stormwater review, I just wanted to. The process that is outlaid in our process, sort of newly re-reformed process indicates that it will. Blow through the planning board. And then.
I think David's people put all that together, did they not?
I think so.
I'm, um, the stormwater regulations, uh, Horsley Witten, we worked with Horsley Witten on that.
We had done the initial.
Oh.
The initial documentation, I think, three, probably four years ago now, I think it was right, right when COVID started or right before it.
Right.
Oh, okay.
And it was more for the maintenance, like the post-approval maintenance and oversight of the sites. And that was, I think, driven from that two or three. Uh, unit common driveway over by the high school. On Main Street, I think that was kind of spurred creating that document.
Sure. Okay, so when you say we have to prepare it, what what do, who is this we, what's the preparation?
So administratively, I I would do that. Um, I just, it's it's, it's actually, it's pretty low. It's just, it's a, it's just a form and it's just a couple pages as. As was in your documents, so just making sure we identify the the property and and then refer back to the the plan. The stormwater management narrative and the maintenance um log that's in it.
Right, and then you know, yeah, that we discussed here tonight.
Tie them all together. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Other um pieces on this, do we need to decide tonight on the surety for this, or just can we discuss that with the? With the Dennis?
Yeah, you don't need to decide, we just, it needs to be decided before the decision is. Completed, it'll be, it's in the decision.
On the type, not the amount.
Yes, yeah, and I don't know how you, I have not been involved in determining the amount.
We usually ask David for an opinion. Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
And I don't want to put you on the spot tonight, but you can maybe forward that information. You can kind of ponder that, David. And forward that information to Sue.
Sure.
It's gonna be an expensive driveway, huh, David?
Yeah, it's it's a step down from five nineteen, but it's it's still an expensive driveway.
You know?
A lot going on in that little distance.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
That that that's sure, that shows you how, you know, how much value there is in establishing a buildable lot. In town.
Shows that we live in a highly regulated state.
Yeah, but I mean, this is a sensitive area, right? I mean, who.
It is, yeah.
In the past, who would bother doing this? Nobody would take it on.
No, that's right. The easy sites were all gone a long time ago. It's true.
Well, yeah, you have to remember that it's it's a, it it's held in the family, so.
Right. Right.
There's there's some.
Different.
You go back, you go back enough time and people would just bulldoze right through the wetland area and not give a damn anyway.
We gave it very far.
Yeah, no, actually, not too far in the. Yeah, in the past.
Yeah.
Right, Brian, I would bring up one other thing just because. Um, Dennis is is still here and it was, it's about the naming of the street. So the subdivision regulation says that that's the planning board's um authority to name the street.
That was, that was proposed uh i- i- in the draft.
It was, that was proposed, that's the, what they've been using is the Eagleness Drive.
And it said in the draft that the the. Historical society people had a look at it.
It's, it says, my understanding is that has been typical in the past.
It has been.
And that was a condition I found on another. Um, on another decision, so didn't know if that was, you were going to follow that policy or preference.
Well, I I I will make a statement. That that's that's applied, I think, to, uh. You know, we're, well, I was gonna say it's, it it applies to public roads, but. With the cottages projects that did not apply.
No, I don't think that's true. Isn't that where tips here, but isn't that where funds be and all that came?
Oh, no, no, that's what I mean. It it, we we did get.
We did talk to the commission.
We did talk to the historical commission.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would think that instead of Eagleness Drive, it should be Fusco Drive, to be honest.
I think Dennis.
Seriously, because because you're trying to reflect. You know, in the past, you're reflecting the, you know.
Yeah, we have Poor's Lane, we, yeah, all of it.
I think Dennis had had some information on that if he wants to share.
Yeah, let me just. So unfortunately, Michael dropped off the call, but I was just interested in the stormwater discussion, so the, what I heard from Michael was when his parents bought the property. A number of years ago, it was a farm, a tree. a number of years ago, it was a farm, a tree farm before they bought it, and the tree farm was called the Eagle's Nest. So that's why Michael chose that name. And it just if it interests the board, I can have Michael send an email to Sue tomorrow, just just kind of confirming what I'm what I'm saying now. That's why he he chose that name Eagle's Nest. It's not because there's a nest on the property.
No, I understood. I'm just, I think I think it would be I think it would be a nice gesture at the very least to to run it past the Historical Commission. If that hasn't been done. And from what you just said, Dennis, I bet they would be fine with it.
Can I just ask for a clarification? Because Dennis has said, and I think it's been said in the past, Eagle's Nest, which sounds more like normal language to me. And I don't really like eagle nest without the apostrophe S. I think it sounds funny. So maybe Michael needs to clarify which it is.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, Bailey's Lane sometimes has the apostrophe and sometimes it doesn't. Seems to depend on whom you talk to.
But in this case, it's.
But there's an S on Bailey's Lane, regardless of whether or not that apostrophe is.
Well, that's different, but the but this is the nest belonging to the eagle, right?
Well, no, that's my point. My point. Exactly. I mean, you have the whether it's apostrophe S or just S.
I'm just saying, I like an S, not just eagle nest.
Yeah, I'm trying to back up that.
So good. Thank you. Anyway, we'll see what Michael wants to do.
Well, yeah, I I mean, kind of late here to be going to the Historical Commission. What if they come up with something, you know?
Yeah, but they don't, they don't get to pick. This is a courtesy, right? So.
Yeah, I I think we've we've exceeded exceeded to their suggestions in the past.
Yeah.
They made sense. And I'm thinking, you know, the Major Boyd Drive is the most recent one.
Well, this, if it's really up to, if if the planning board has the the say in the regs, right? And, you know, I get the feeling that I can't think of his name, Mr. Crowe was, the name he had chosen was kind of a placeholder name. He wasn't invested in it. It wasn't anything tied to the land, right? He had to, maybe every place he goes, every town, he uses year run, whatever it was. So I think there we were happy to have have a thing here from the history of the town. But in this case, where the owner is proposing something that is connected to the land, I'm going inclined to go along with it. Make a discharge.
I am too.
I I think I think it would be, as a minimum, a nice gesture to inform the Historical Commission that
It's happening.
We're approving, yeah. But maybe not. Maybe it just this is a sleeping dog's lie kind of a thing. I don't know.
Well, I'm just, if if we ask, we may not like the answer we get back.
Well, they may not meet for two months, you know.
That's the that's the other thing that I'm, you know, it it, yeah, I did not consider that this would need a a two lot private way, need a a you know. I actually thought he might just use a River Road address.
I thought about that too, but if it's not really part of River Road, that doesn't really work in terms of.
Well, private driveway, you know, I mean, yeah.
I don't know. Have some scam about that one.
I I hear you.
It's a private way. The only reason that I was aware that the Historic Commission, like I said, I I was kind of using a former decision as a template, and I noticed that it was on there. So I did ask Anna how they how that worked.
Yeah, consulted them. On the other hand, then for Chip's other project, Daly was the name of the land, you know, connected with the former ownership of the land, Daly Drive.
Yeah, that's that's why I'd be okay with Fusco Drive too, but
He's probably thought of that and maybe, you know.
Maybe the other cooperating owner is not going along with that.
Yeah, I'm I'm fine. I'm fine with Eagle's Nest. And again, just drop a note to the Historical Commission. Wouldn't cost us anything. Just let them know that we 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 modeled their past suggestions by tying the name of this road to the to the land. And wanted to let you know.
There you go.
And not not seeking, you know, something about, we're not seeking approval, we're just
Just letting you know.
We're just letting you know that we approved it and following their their precedents.
Okay, I think that's a, I think that's a great solution, actually.
And then, you know, in the future, if it's we're we're going to come to them, you know, for anything larger.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, the scale of this, it didn't occur that, you know, this needed to be on their radar six months ago.
Right, exactly. Yeah.
Okay, Sue, other other?
I think that's the last wrench I want to throw in.
All right, all right. Very good. Thank you. Okay, so let's let's move along. The next item on the agenda, Drake's Landing Phase Two Release and Return of Unused Escrow Funds. So where where are we on this? It had been on a couple of agendas and
That guy looks just like Chip Hall. I remember a guy named Chip Hall.
Good Lord, yes. Look, look, it's been a long time, Chip. How are you?
Yes, I'm doing well. How are you guys?
Doing fine, thank you.
What's your handicap this summer, Chip?
Um, I fish.
Smart guy.
Wow, that's a change. That's a change.
Yeah, sorry for the delay on this, guys. I mean, I had I had a personal health issue about two years ago. And so I was at a commission for about six months. We spent some time trying to get the asphalt completed for conservation. Conservation Hat couldn't wrap their brain around the fact that the buildings could have moved based on the planning board decision, saying you could get the Pickwick style unit you had. And we spent a lot of time trying to get the plant, the Conservation Commission to sign off on the asphalt, which they finally have. I believe there was a ton of turnover in GM2 as well. So anyway, needless to say, it took a long time to get this thing to you guys, but I'm glad that we finally did.
Good.
Okay, so Sue?
So the essence of the form is it's it has been checked by Town Council. It's exactly like the previous one. I'm happy to bring it up. It was prepared by the applicant and checked by our Town Council. I'm happy to bring it up if that would be helpful.
Yes, just before that. So the documentation has been submitted to whom? The asphalt.
Oh, I it has been submitted to us.
Okay.
And they had and they had submitted it, I forget the date, just a a short time ago. David had just a few items that he asked to be corrected, and I received those. Sent a quick reminder today. We were waiting for those and I received that digital copy today. And I'll be getting the hard copy on Thursday. I've been assured by Stephen Sawyer.
Okay.
So I will share that if you'd like. Very straightforward document.
You enlarge that slightly.
Oh, yes, of course.
See that? Thank you.
How's your eyes, Brian?
Well, with the glasses, they're good, but you know, I can't enlarge the screen here.
Chip's been a few years for all of us, so yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, wood and wood cabin engineering. Yeah, wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, forgot. Yep.
Yikes, yikes, yikes. So Sue, this is what you said has been reviewed by Town Council?
Yes.
Okay, so I feel confident about the booking page and all that business.
Okay, yeah, sounds good. So just what what is the the this is just a straight release. Are there any funds still being held on this project?
Yes. And I had sent that, and it's just updated a little bit. When I spoke to accountant today, it was or last week when I knew this was going to be on the agenda, it's $3,089.51. There may be a a few cents difference. But that would be the amount, and that's what I would ask for a a vote on in addition to a vote on the release.
Okay. Are there any outstanding issues, you know, that that concern the board relative to the project there? I, you know, I know the the management there had had questions over over the time, and it's been a couple of years, I think, since we've heard from them, or maybe a year and a half.
The management may have turned over, too. As far as I know, we, the things we were hearing about toward the last little while there were not planning board matters, and it was really the asphalt we were waiting for.
Yeah, that that's was my understanding, but there's nothing that has come to the forefront here recently or whatnot from those folks. Good, good, excellent. Okay. So I make a motion to I need the name of that. I don't have it on my screen here to.
Oh, to grant the tripartite release form for Drake's Landing Phase Two.
Thank you. I'll I'll accept that as as the amendment to my motion. Thank you. Appreciate it. Any questions, board members? All those in favor?
And Crowe tonight?
Good. The vote is four zero in favor. And then we need another motion, Sue, for the release of the remaining escrow funds.
Yes.
Okay, I move to release the remaining escrow funds for the Drake's Landing project. Now let's you put in the an appropriate date on that project in the in the amount of $3,089.51, which which may be modified slightly. Something to that effect. There's a few pennies or something.
Correct.
All right.
Second.
Thank you. All those in discussion? No. All those in favor?
Guy.
Vote is four zero. Thank you. In approval.
Thank you. The thank you. The the last document that I received about the money being held by the town showed a balance of $4,216.91.
Yeah, let me just pull it up and I can actually show that to you. It may have been, there may, when you last saw it, may have not had the final Meridian invoice. I'm trying to, I'm just scrolling down. Which has been at the last Meridian invoice was 2022, I believe.
Shouldn't have been any invoices.
Weren't. There haven't been any recently, but you will get this full accounting, of course, as is required, but let me just.
No, that's that's fine. I don't want to waste the board's time. We're talking about a couple of boxes, so.
No, no, it's 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 yours. No, no.
Yes.
See, there's the 4216 I see right there. Boarded balance. And then there's a balance.
Then there's a final, final over on the other side.
Of 306732.
Right. And that was, and like I said, when I went down to check with her, it went up to 8951 based on interest over the last however many months.
I see. All right, great.
Yeah, Chip, we'll forward to, I mean, the motion is if 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 there's a discrepancy, it'll be adjusted to the correct total, if that in fact is not correct.
Not a problem. And then how can I make plans? I've got to get the original of that document because that's got to be recorded before the bank will release the funds on the tri-party release.
Right. Yes, so we can get, depending on how quickly I can get signatures from board members. And I can have it available, let you know as soon as that is signed and available for pickup.
All right, great. And I'll have Melissa have somebody from her crew come and grab it and take it to the registry.
Yeah, good. Would that be ready this weekend, Sue, or what do you think? For signing?
Looked like it was ready.
No, I mean, we
Yes.
I'm not going to be back till sometime Friday, but.
Yes. I intend to be in on Thursday. Does early next week work, Chip?
Yeah, just let us, I mean, it's been there for two and a half years, so. And I'm just trying to clean things up here. So yeah, just send me an email, shoot me a text, anything like that, and we'll figure out how to get somebody down there.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know if you guys know, we moved our company up to Maine three years ago. So we've been we've been up here now. That's why I was going to come down in person, but it was getting, would have been a little late for me.
You wouldn't have found anyone.
We're all in different places here, so.
I got you.
No, no, no matter. Okay. So yeah, we'll share that.
That's enough money to cover one of these new Mercury Electric
Yeah.
motors for your boat.
Boiling motor, yeah, nice quiet motor.
Twenty horsepower electric.
Yeah, no, I got a 250 on mine. I need a little bit of juice on that.
What kind of fish are you fishing for, man?
Strippers.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I got to get out in the ocean. Actually, today I caught my first sea trout. So we're starting, we're starting to see him up in Maine now, which is different, you know, based on the temperatures of the water. We're seeing the black bass and sea trout up here now.
Warm waters are not good for lobster, no.
Well, luckily for you guys, the lobsters are plentiful this year because the water has still been cold. I mean, today, today was the highest marks, 59 degrees. Usually it's in the low 60s by now, so. Yeah, so the strippers are sticking down in your neck of the woods. You get the little spoolies up here waiting for the water to warm up.
Okay, all right. Well, summer, summer just begins. Yeah, well, happy, good fishing.
Thank you. It was great seeing you guys.
Thank you.
Good to you.
Enjoy.
Bye bye.
All right, take care. Okay. All right, we'll get that off the list. Great. Okay, so now we come to our board and can we?
I think we can get David off.
Yeah, I just didn't know if you need anything on Drake's Landing, so I figured I'd hang around.
No, no, we appreciate it.
Thank you for that, David.
Something else, okay, I'm sure.
And thank you for reviewing those final things without even invoicing, because I know.
It's it would have been more of a hassle to be like, Chip, we need $500 more from you than than anything, so not worth it. All right, guys, have a good night.
You too, David.
Good night.
See you. Thank you. Okay, so now we come to the the annual board organization. And I think I had, you know, tipped the hand last week. Ann was not here and neither was Deb, so Ray, Tim and I had a little discussion.
And we voted you in charge of everything.
I'm the empress of the planning board now.
Yes.
We thought you'd want to double up on committee assignments.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness. No. But but to turn the camera in a different direction, I think Deb is managing to elude us yet again.
I, yes, I I know, I know. So what what we ended up discussing was, you know, and and Deb had you know, taken her name off the succession chart for just a variety of reasons. And so I we would go back into our normal rotation, which would be Ray Cook and followed by Tim.
You 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 mentioned succession. I'm just wondering, is there going to be a director, somebody doing my makeup? I want a snack tray.
You need really nice suits. You need really nice suits too for that role.
Yeah, that's right. And and M and M's, but all the green ones picked out.
Oh, God, I love it. I love it. So in, you know, since since we we kind of, you know, I'll I'll know exactly where this is going to go. I'm going to make a motion here that I nominate Ray Cook for Chair of the Planning Board. Tim Cronin is Vice Chair. And not sure who's up for Clerk. Maybe me. Is that usually the past chair?
The outgoing chair, yeah.
Ongoing chair and Brian Murphy is Clerk.
Uh oh.
And which certainly frees up lots of time for Ann.
Feeling the CPC briefing down my neck.
We'll deal with yeah, we'll we'll deal with this first and then we can talk about committees.
Committees, okay.
So a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll second it, but only because I think Tim will bring in the swing state vote.
Exactly. He'll he'll do a fine job. So yes, so without further discussion, I'll take a vote. I Brian Murphy, I.
Wait, wait, wait. Further discussion effective immediately or next meeting?
Typically, it's the next meeting, but I'm happy to to.
Next meeting. Next effective next meeting.
Well, yeah, that's I think what we've usually done, but I I don't have a gavel here to hand you, you know, my water bottle.
You can bring me a nice skipping stone.
Oh, there you go.
There you go. So anyway, let's all those in favor. Brian Murphy, Ray Cook, Kim Cronin, four zero. So Mr. Cook, congratulations and the 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 mantle of responsibility has been shifted to you. Yes, sir. Yes.
Well, let let the record show the planning board's appreciation for the august and wise guidance of Brian Murphy over the last.
Here, here.
Well, 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 thank you, but yeah, just sheer sheer luck often and but.
Seriously, Brian, you you did it because it wasn't easy with all the Meramec planning stuff and.
No, no, but but as I told you in my note, you have a great opportunity ahead with to put your own imprint. Yes.
Okay, don't don't look so happy, Brian.
No, no. And after seeing Ray still said, yes, I'm willing to step up, so.
Thank you, Ray.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And and we we we're all in this together. You know that as we
I do.
As we march forward on this later, after probably through after the summer, whatever. Well, it's up to you for to figure it out, so.
Well, as I said, as I said last time, if it weren't for Sue being over there, I'd be like, hell, no.
Yep, yep, we're all good. So that's great. Thank you all. Appreciate that. So in terms of the internal committee, is the only one that the CPC or or what?
Or is that
NVPC?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think so. We don't have to send anybody anywhere else, do we?
No, no.
Is the is the Affordable Housing Trust one that that you just recommend as a is that a that doesn't change annually? It's just as until further notice?
I thought those were all. Somebody's got to remind me. Were those weren't those people all appointed by the select board?
No, maybe.
I'm not sure. I don't remember.
Yeah, maybe we should probably find that out. I'm sure Deb would love to stay in that role anyway, if if it's something we appointed her as.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
She's passionate about that.
That's that's the way I remember it.
Yeah.
Maybe we did. Wants to focus and.
Yeah, yeah, I think that that'll be fine. So if if you remember, I had asked Sue to step in. She's done an able job filling in. I had conflicts with my AARP tax work this this year with attending those meetings. And then in May, I had I was traveling, so I couldn't, and she did. I am, Sue, however, attending this Thursdays.
Oh.
So you're you're off the hook.
Super. Thanks.
You you can listen if you want to, but.
I'm good.
So I I mean, and I'm probably going to run into the same problem next year. If anybody is interested in NVPC, you should speak up. I mean, I certainly could step aside and do something else.
Well, if you're happy doing it with Sue pinch hitting when you're away, it seemed to.
It 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 worked. Yeah, just because I felt really guilty missing three meetings and, you know, sometimes they do need a the quorum vote. You know, there's always three or four towns that can't make the meeting.
Oh.
So or sometimes three towns. And so they they have to have a quorum, but so I'm happy to, but I just wanted to offer that if you you were interested in a
That's an in-person meeting on a Thursday?
It's hybrid hybrid at it's at Thursdays at eleven o'clock.
Oh, that is tricky.
It's, yeah, I if I was still working, I couldn't do it.
No.
It used to be at night.
And then when I did it, it was at night.
Yeah. And you know, most, most of them, if they travel, they they view it as a chance to get out of their office, you know.
It makes me feel less bad for Sue because it falls during working hours, so that's.
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah.
I know, I'm not. I'm I'm happy to stay away from it.
Pass on that. Well, I just wanted to make sure that.
Yes, but there's always next year, Brian, right?
There's there's chomping at the bit, et cetera. So, okay, so I'm willing to do that. We can vote on that in a minute. But then the CPC and it 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 you know, comes down to the two of you and I'd be willing, you know, I don't have a huge time commitment on the seat on that. If the two of you can't do it, I'd be happy to do CPC as well. But I will be tired of it.
How long have you been doing it?
I've just been doing it. Well, I've had two stints, so I've been doing it for a year.
Yeah, I haven't done it for a long time.
Yeah, yeah. And so the last time, did you succeed me the last time on the CPC, Ann?
I can't remember. I've done it a bunch of times with and it's.
I think you might have, but it was during COVID. Yeah, so I don't know. They had much going on, but.
I did some of the CPC during COVID.
We've all done some.
Yeah, you all three of you have been up there doing that.
How much do they even meet?
Well, that's the thing. Yeah, it's it's monthly, but you know, a lot of I would say a quarter of the meetings get called off because there's no activity. And Wendy does a magnificent job marshaling everything together. She she really, you know, is well, she's well prepared for all the meetings and, you know, she's the chair and.
Who is Wendy Willis?
Wendy Reed.
Wendy Reed.
Oh, Wendy Reed. I'm sorry. Okay.
Yeah.
She's just like the perpetual chair. Yeah. Yeah. Wow, what doesn't she do?
Right. No, and she does fantastic job and she's so tuned in, you know, with respect to the other things going on. It's it's a piece of cake. So the meetings are actually very quick, except for the one, you know, where they bring in the applications and it depends, you know, what you have. So it's not not a huge time commitment. It's it can be very interesting because you do see, you know, what the conservation efforts are around town. So that part of it's really cool, as well as this, you know, the efforts to get state and federal funding, things like that.
What day do they meet?
Thursdays. Like the it's like the third, third Thursday or something like that of the month.
Thursdays work for me. Mondays and Tuesdays are.
Actually, you know, they've been occurring the same week as our meetings.
So I can't do Mondays at all and I can't do.
Yeah, so it's Thursdays. I mean, I don't mind continuing doing it at all, but you know, I don't. It is interesting, you know, so I didn't know if others were interested.
Well, if you want to keep doing it because you've only been doing it a year and you feel like the continuity is important, that's fine. But if you're tired of it, I'm happy to take it up.
I don't I don't mind continuing in, but you know, do let me know if you if you're interested in it. I can definitely turn it over to you. Otherwise, I'm happy to continue with it.
Okay. Not in a very decisive mood. Why don't I take it on since you're Chair? I'm sure you'll have opportunities to do other things. Well, I will start that and I don't. What do we do? Give the names to the select board and they agree up at all or just I don't know when it turns over? I don't remember.
Good question. I yeah, I would just inform Wendy.
Okay. Okay.
I'm happy. I'm happy to do that if you want.
When I was there, we took a vote to because the rule had been that we had to serve for
Three years or something, right?
Yeah. And they and with Wendy's help, they changed the rule to be an annual thing, so.
Yeah, yeah, we were in the planning board kind of adamant because we like to.
Yeah, sure.
Sue, maybe maybe you could just let them know in a that at this meeting, we voted a different planning board member. Thank you.
And I'll see if there's anything that goes with that swearing in or anything.
Yeah, okay, okay, and I'll check.
Well, I'll I'll make an official motion. Tie tie it all up. That I move that Brian Murphy be we now nominated for the NVPC committee role, Ambard Dean for the Community Preservation Committee. And that
Deb Hamilton remain.
Deb Hamilton remain as the Affordable Housing Trust member.
Second.
Right.
Good. Discussion. No. All in favor? Four zero. Great. And Sue, I I'd be, you know, I think if you can remain as as the alternate you know, just the default should be okay for me, but you know, looking forward, there'll be a few times, I'm sure.
Sounds good.
And and that worked out very well. Thank you. They were very appreciative.
You're welcome.
Okay, so let's moving on the July meeting schedule. I know when we first that first came out and we talked about it and we said, well, we usually just do one meeting and but here we are. So we were scheduled for July second and then our usual meeting late later in the month. I'm unavailable on the second and it is July fourth week. I don't know where that leaves everybody else.
Well, I had noted in my calendar, I thought at the time we talked about it, that we were going to have one meeting and we thought it would be on the sixteenth. Just keep that sixteen.
And that'd be fine if I see where people's personal calendars are and and whatever.
I'm away on the ninth.
Then that's even better.
I don't know what other people are up to.
Well, I'm I'm okay in August. I mean, in July, but in August, I'm going to be away at the second half of the month.
Okay.
So that would normally be on the twentieth. I won't be available on August twentieth. Other than that, I'm good with whatever.
Okay, so should we we should agree on July sixteenth?
That's good by me.
How about you, Tim? You didn't hear about.
Yeah, I'm just looking at my calendar. Yes, that's fine.
Okay, all right. Yep, we'll put that in and Sue, maybe you can just drop a note to Deb and let her know.
Yes.
Probably to Fusco and Grici as well.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, sorry, I got them excited about the ninth, but yeah.
I know.
No, it it it's fine.
We left it relatively open ended.
Yeah. Okay. And and yeah, let's let's we'll deal with August. I mean, if you know, Tim can, you know, whatever, Ray. I mean, if there's something that comes up.
In my absence, I I would be happy.
It it, yes.
Assigning my heavy responsibilities. Let's plan any MBTA stuff for August twentieth.
You know, you know, heavy discussion. Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
Well, there was a thing, just a brief aside, an online chat thing locally. You know, in Byfield, they voted, they passed their MBTA communities thing and they have these two districts. So somebody wrote in high Dudgeon, the MBTA has bought twelve acres in Byfield, and I don't know where they think they're going to get the water to build those houses for affordable housing. And I thought, you know, let me count the ways. So this is what we're up against, guys.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like one of those drawings where you try to find the problems.
I don't know. It's 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 a perplexing one.
It certainly is. Okay, let's see if we can just get these minutes out of the way and then we can look just to wrap up here.
Right.
The May twenty one, right, Sue?
Yes, I get this right up.
Page and a half.
I'll make it a little really teensy.
There you go.
Do you need a bigger?
No, no, I I looked through them. Anybody have questions on page one?
Nope.
I don't think so.
I had been.
Oh, did anything ever happen with that Ilesley Hill Road?
Um, the they're still the planning, the the select board is still making its decision. I it did discuss it at a at a meeting. I went back and listened to it. I don't think they've made a firm decision. I think they've decided that I think they've decided that they that that they will. And I think they're leaning towards that it would need to be fully paved or fully improved the length for the full, whatever the the two hundred feet, whatever the but they don't. They haven't decided that what the standard yet is. I think they're trying to decide, kind of weighing.
Thanks.
All right. Next page, page two.
Not much there.
Okay, I'm no here not hearing any comments. I move to approve the May twenty first minutes as as shown. All those in favor? One, two, three, well, four, four zero in approval. Very good. Any correspondence, Sue, we should look at?
Sure. Hold on, I will share again. So there was a Butters notification, Byfield. A special permit to increase the square footage and to go up a little higher.
Always higher. This is.
I'm with Lum Island. I always know when I see that it's Plum Island.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, we got to see over the neighbors.
And then Amesbury was a legal notice for an amendment to their zoning map. Didn't say much.
Something from commercial.
Yeah, and it's, yeah, it was extending it and then removing a portion of it, so.
A project coming along that needs that spot for something.
Guessing.
Yeah. Okay.
Be riveting stuff. Okay.
Everything's tough. Those are the only two.
All right.
Yes.
Any administrative details you need to share? How were the interviews?
Oh, yes, they went very well. We had some very qualified candidates, some really, really qualified candidates, one which I believe was going to get a written offer today.
Oh.
Oh, good.
And this this is on the.
Got a written offer, I think.
Yeah, the the one who's going to take over Caitlin's role.
Yes, and also for the building.
Help helping us in other departments as well.
Building department for conservation for CPC if and when needed.
All that sort of floor stuff. It's it sounded like a a wizard needed to be hired to do the things they want.
And this, well, this person actually had a had a very similar role in her last position and she's just simply moving to because she lives closer here and she's cutting out some. So it's a real. in her last position and she's just simply moving to, because she lives closer here and she's cutting out some, so it's a real win-win. She's more qualified in terms of administrative details about, you know, subdivision law and all that than I am, so that's like Godsend. I think, I know, I think she'll be really good, really, really good. Yeah, I'm excited, so. I'm sure you will.
Good. Any other comments or?
Um, none that I can think of. So I will get busy trying to get a consolidated draft. I may call around to ask, there was, you know, some blanks in the draft that I sent around. One happened to be, you know, what public purpose does this serve? Why are you granting the waivers? I don't know if it's just, if it's enough to say it's consistent with the, you know, the intent of zoning or.
I looked at that. I saw that and I was, I was thinking that could just, that second part of that little paragraph could just be deleted.
Right, yeah.
I agree, yeah.
Again, it was, I was following a template, so I didn't know if it needed to be there or.
Yeah, I think for this, yeah.
It's a pretty small, low-impact situation overall. You know, it's not like we're justifying the creation of an entire neighborhood with 70 houses and three.
Yeah, and then the last one, it was, you know, it was going to have affordable housing. It was going to have some, you know, open space, so.
Yeah, yeah.
That's just not.
And this hasn't, the other thing, too, is it's not like people have been storming us in protest.
No.
No, I was going to say that, but I didn't want to jinx it earlier. You never heard from a single Butter.
No, no.
I was afraid one might click and say, well, here I am tonight.
Seemingly all in favor or whatever, so, yeah, so all good. Okay, the only thing I think we need to get on the agenda and it's Sue and beyond Ray's docket is, you know, our associate. We, we, we need to, maybe can revisit the, how we, how we put a notice out again and
Yeah.
make sure we're on a, you know, looking for volunteer list or something. Yeah.
Yeah, our associate who abandoned us, Ian. Brian, what is he on? He's on some other committee?
I never found out what he chose versus us, so.
Okay.
I heard that from, yeah.
That's because it's just beyond our ability to conceive if somebody would choose another assignment.
I know.
What voodoo now to stick the pins in, you know?
Yeah, I mean, God.
Yeah, I don't know. Did you hear, Sue, at all where he went or?
I can't remember. And he did, he did have two committees and he re-upped on one, and I don't recall which one it was.
Okay, yeah, whatever. Plus, he had that little, another baby in November.
That's right.
Totally fine, of course. He seemed like a good, he seemed like a good catch for us.
Yeah.
But, you know. So anyway, that's, that's, that's on Dr. Cook's, yes, effort there.
I thought there were some really knowledgeable people that showed up at the MBTA hearing that seemed to know an awful lot about planning. Maybe we could tap some of them.
Yeah.
At the MBTA hearings.
You know, somehow we could, we could get out the word and.
So anyway, that's, that's to be worked on. And that's all I've got. Anybody else? Try to stay, beat the heat here, this early summer heat, boy.
Enjoy.
I played nine holes of golf this morning at 10 o'clock. It was, it was enough.
Yeah, you should start earlier.
And we walk, we walk, so it's, it was.
Good for you.
We walk.
This is the first real test of our geothermal system and it, yeah.
So far, good.
So far, so good. And the other thing I noticed, I hadn't realized, it's just, it's quiet in the backyard, whereas before in hot weather, the compressor would constantly be running.
Yeah, that's cycling, yeah.
Yeah, so that's a nice little bit.
But it's cool, Ray?
Oh, my God, yeah. We got some sort of weird thermostat came with it. And there's some program offered by the utility where if you use their smart thermostat, you get a kickback. And it tries to avoid, you know, using peak out. So what it did this morning is it tried to get us down like 65 degrees so that it wouldn't have to run during.
Right, so it wouldn't run later. Wow, interesting.
And it was just, it was just way too cold.
Too smart thermostat.
You walk around your house with a vest on.
Yeah.
The hell are you thinking?
You need to watch out for the utility conditions.
Exactly.
Again, have them imposing.
In the old days, if you saw an old man talking to the thermostat, you'd be worried about him, but now I got the logs, I got the thermostat, the cell phone, TV, God knows, my car, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you do have to remember that that thermostat provided by the utility company has the utility company's interest first.
Yeah. But if I do everything right, I might get, you know, a credit card with 15 bucks on it or something.
Well, I've got to say, I have mini splits, so there are compressors, but they're very noisy. And with all the solar panels that I have, I'm still banking credits and so I feel quite virtuous and.
Good for you.
Happy in my 76-degree house that I don't have to pay any electrical bills for.
Nice. Well, that's awesome. Yeah.
I got some email that said that last month, I, you know, we expanded the number of solar panels we have. I produce 1.5 megawatt hours of electricity.
Did you in a month?
I think so.
That seems like a lot.
Those months, like March, April, if there's, and May, if they're sunny before the leaves are up, those are the big production months.
Wow.
Makes sense.
Amazing.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
Kind of counterintuitive, but there's quite a bit of sun and very little shade.
Just, you got to clear cut your yard, Ray. You'll be fine.
Got to do what now?
Clear cut.
Yeah, that's right.
You can get that, you can get that all the time.
There's enough trees down on River Road that we don't, yeah.
All right, everybody.
All right.
I have to go turn lights on or something, but anyway, thank you.
Happy summer solstice.
Good meeting.
You soon.
See you. Take care.
You too. Have a good evening. Bye-bye.